Seven o'clock, I'm calling a meeting to order and first order of business tonight is budget workshop and fund accounting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We did make a little change to this. We'll we'll jump into the fund accounting next time. Go over that kind of overview there. So for tonight, we'll start off with a quick year in review of the 2024 budget performance with our major operating funds. Jump into a quick property tax overview, go over some budgeting risks for the next year and upcoming years. And then we'll switch it to our budget budget initiatives and goals and then Ted will get up and do a presentation on that part as well. So let's kind of just start with our little year interview here. Looking at general fund revenues came in 500,000 over what was originally budgeted. Property taxes, those collections were strong, had a 98.7% collection rate, which says a lot about our tax base, which is very good. Sales tax came in high, it normally did or normally does. Everything else slightly over, permit license fees was one of those other ones that were well over what was budgeted. That just shows we're a growing city, just like the past several years. Overall, for the fund or general fund revenues were increased about 500,000 over what was budgeted. For expenditures, we were just about 87,000 over what was originally budgeted. Personal costs, there were some savings there from our switch and city management as well as employee turnover. And like the time it takes to fill some of those positions, especially PD positions. Those are 15 to 20 week lag time in between departure and hire on those positions there. Some savings there in capital outlay, some of that was for Eagle Lake Park that we're going to be spending in 25 those improvements there, those playground improvements. All the transfers were right on target for budgeted and our net change of fund balance, we ended up adding about $220,000 to fund balance in general fund number 24. Once again, these are audited numbers. We'll get to start our audit here in about another month and a half. So we'll get those finalized. Water fund revenues came in slightly over what was budgeted, had $159,000 surplus there. Water expenditures, slightly under what was originally budgeted. And you'll see the Wichita water purchase there, we had a savings of 215,000. And that was just due to the water restrictions there. We relied heavily on our CC way usage compared to Wichita, that's what I normally do. Major other differences there, we just a capital outlay line. Just didn't have the time to get every project we wanted to get done. So some of those shifted to 25, which are out for bid right now. Sewer fund, good performance on the revenue side. Extra $458,000 in revenues. On the expense side, do you want to touch on this real quick? We only spent 2.6 million compared to the 4.7 budgeted and most of that was because of the 1.7 in capital outlay. We shouldn't have time to get those projects done. To spend that extra allocation there for the CIP. And we already have projects in the work for this year, which will use some of that fund balance up. I know they're looking at 53rd Street and the manholes there. That'd be roughly 500,000 ish just for that project alone. And we'll outline all the other projects that we'll start lining out for our next five to 10 year period.
That's a pretty significant change. What did we plan this year that didn't get done?
So last year, this year, I know we're investing quite a bit in manhole.
I want to know about this year. I want to know about what did we not do last year that we planned on doing?
I think it was those manhole, manhole recovery. We've been pretty focused on the manholes. Re re lining the manholes and Rebecca is going to come do a presentation and half of it's on that project for 2025 for the sewer system.
That's two, just $2 million.
Well, so that year, remember, we were transferring some to the sewer CIP and we didn't, we didn't end up creating a sewer CIP. So it just dropped down to the bottom line. That that's where a majority of that's going to be.
Well, the perception error gets really messed up when you see that big number. So we need to, we need to really, we need to drill down into that a lot more. I don't know if you have the data right now, but we need to drill down in that and see what that really is because that's a big delta. So, all right.
And then once again, another big portion of that fund balance is going to be used for the CC way expansion. Paying that upfront interest costs and things like that. So that'll be a good, maybe in a half, $2 million of that as well. Moving into solid waste, pretty much right on target expenditure side, revenues came in slightly over expected. Pretty normal for that fund. Stormwater. Pretty well on the revenue collections over what was expected. The expenses were under as well there. We'll say for 25, we did budget a $400,000 transfer for the storm drainage improvements, which some of that will be used for those Aurora Park city contribution for that project. So that ending fund balance there in 2025 is really going to be, you know, $50,000 to $60,000. The streets performed well on the revenue side collection, pretty much right on budget. On the expenditure side, the big discrepancy there was the 24 streets program and the delay in getting that going. Which is why we increased what we were spending in 25 and kind of combined those two programs together. So most of that fund balance is going to the 25 streets program. Which we did have a pretty good bid on from APEC, I believe. Couple meetings ago when we presented that. Landbank fund accrued about 293,000 in interest over the year. About $6.2 million fund balance ending for 2024. I did put a note in there saying we did transfer about 2.6 of that to the general fund in January of this year. To help with the city contribution for the public works building. Equipment reserve, pretty straightforward to show them what was budgeted, what we planned to spend, what we bought. Fund balance, we made the same there. That's kind of the year in review for 24. Just a quick recap. It'll be much more in depth when we do the audit and everything like that. Any questions on that? That's kind of a lot of information real quick, but just wanted to provide some brief overview of the last year, 2024. So next on our agenda was just doing a quick property tax overview. Just wanted to show out or show how we've been managing the mill levy over the past few years. You can see back in 2018, it was around 45.7 and over the past several years, we've dropped it about half a mill a year. So last year, our final valuator, our final mill levy ended up being 42.484 when we budgeted for that 42.5. And that's just due to that small shift when the final valuations are published in November. So that's why it ended up just tad bit lower. 45.98 and 21. About three and a half. Yeah, not doing great.
So we need to continue that plan, at least that, that's that's the minimum.
So here's the comparisons. I went in and put in all the 25 mil actual mill rates from all the surrounding cities around us. So this is where we fall from the highest to lowest, right there around the middle right now. So still performing good, still had that half mill decrease and we dropped it out to 1.2% mill levy. So similar to last year, we're going to try and get the same data for this year. This just showed the increase in property taxes levied per property in the city of Bel Air. So when I presented this last year, I explained that all those smaller dots down there had anywhere from a negative one to three or four percent increase. And they're actually property taxes levy on their properties. Then you see the larger dots were the much larger increases and that's just due to all the new construction around town. So a lot of those.
Is that levy Bel Air only or is that total levy?
It's Bel Air. Yep. So as bigger circles, it's, you can see that's where all of our new developments happening. Some of those houses may have just had a foundation at that point. So their tax bill may have been $500 and then the house completed and it jumped up to $1,500. That's what those bigger increases are, those bigger circles. Anywhere from 10 to 100. It just depends on what stage the house was at January 1st of that year. So a lot of those, the houses completed building later in the year, January 1st comes around, they're they're now at their full valuation. When the year prior, they may have just been the foundation in the ground or just getting started building on their house. But that's where all that new construction is. I want to touch on IRBs. I know I had a question, I believe, from council member Dean about these and tried to look at scheduling out all the current IRBs that we have. When they expire and how that affects the tax roll and potentially the mill levy. So right now we have 16 active IRBs. They don't really take effect until the valuation has been added to the tax roll to provide the greatest benefit. We try to wait till it's at that 100% mark before we initiate the start of their IRB so they get the most in return on those property taxes. Currently, the approximately, the approximate praise value of all 16 is 57 million with a 14.25 appraised or assessed value. And all of our IRBs, they currently extend through 2037. That's the longest one we have right now. It's just starting.
If we're really clear, the assessed value is not the tax. That's just the assessed value. The tax is a, is a that times mill levy.
Correct. Yep. This might be kind of hard to see from that far away, but which one's that one? The top one? So I put all them together, extended it out through 2036, 2037 range is when they come back on the tax roll. So for budget year, tax year 25, budget year 26, we have $6,453 worth of property taxes from IRBs that are expiring. And we'll come back onto the tax roll. Which creates the mill equivalent of 0.05 mills. So when that IRB expires this year, we could essentially drop the mill levy 0.0572 mills and we'll stay at the same revenue generation. Right? So it kind of flows through all the way through 2036. So the 26 budget year or tax year, 27 budget year. This is one of those instances where the building that the IRB is on was completed before the tax year began. So it's already generating 24,067 and we'll be generating 29,134 at the beginning of the year. The IRB will take effect and then that whole 29,000 assessed value will remove 4,766 from our tax roll. So really we'd have to increase the mill 0.04 to make us revenue neutral essentially for that year only. And it goes on, 27, 28, we have 107,000 being added to the tax rule and that's from NAMIS on building because there's no IRB associated with that one. So that's the big year, tax year 27, budget year 28, we're adding an equivalent of 2.1 mills to the tax rule that year. So we could drop 2.1 mills and still generate that same property tax dollar amount. They just flows through all the way through 2036.
Yeah, there's a lot of assumption in those mill levy, mill equivalent. So I wouldn't put a lot of salt in in the members.
And to explain a little further, I took it as of this year, right? As of this year right now, and just assumed a 0% growth on all these. So it could increase, could decrease. I just take from what it is right now, 0% increase over that same time period. So more than likely it will go up a little bit.
Zero increase in what?
Valuation.
Yeah, I'm hearing 9, 10%.
We're just trying to demonstrate what the IRBs do to the city and what happens when, when they come off. It's just supposed to be demonstrative. There's no way we can predict 10 years out what the, what the growth patterns of the city is going to be and how it's going to affect. We're just trying to get a static.
When you say 9, 10%, are you talking about the city as a whole?
That's what the praise values have gone up. So assess values would go up about that as well.
Yeah. So these are just specifically for those IRB properties. So. Very conservative. Yes, very conservative. Yep.
Great. I appreciate you putting this together because I do think it's important for citizens to understand when we give IRBs, what kind of future revenue streams will be coming back on the tax rule. So even though it's not exact, it's a good exercise, in my opinion, to kind of see what benefit will our city have in the future from these businesses. So thank you for doing that.
There's a very enlightening exercise on as well too. Appreciate it. So what are we thinking about as we start developing our budget and what are we thinking about? And how we're going to manage financial risks that come up? This is the same slide that's been on our presentations the past couple of years. They're just always relevant, right? Housing market recessions, GO bonds, guarantee about city's taxing authority, which is in question right now for some recent proposed legislation. Operational expenses, inflation, workforce shortage, retention employees, et cetera. They're always there. State legislation, that's a big one right now. There's what's some proposed legislation recently. It has a lot of influence on how cities and counties budget moving forward. Not sure if anything's yet to get done with that this year, but I'm assuming something along those lines will be done relatively soon. So what that legislation was doing was essentially capping cities and counties at a 4% growth rate or the CPI plus new construction, whichever one was lower. So if our CPI and new growth of our budget is 2.5%, we'd be capped at that 2.5% that we could generate and add to the tax rolls. If we want to exceed that, then we didn't have to go to a vote of the public.
So none of those proposals passed and unless they are passed, there's, I guess, Thursday or Friday, they're not going to happen. So, but I doubt they got time to pass them, but I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think anything's definitely happening this year for sure.
Yeah, I don't think.
But the traction I got, I'm assuming something might happen next year along those lines. So we'll kind of start preparing for that. And how to protect against that risk, just having those quality reserves in our funds, the credit rating factors. Once again, that's going to be a big one with the GO bonds and how that legislation interacts with that, if that stays in there. So we just budget for our needs, budget for our priorities. And once again, just making a plan and sticking to it. Once we have that roadmap, we have our path that we follow and we'll get to the point we want to get to. So I know the mayor just touched on it a little bit ago, but I want to get some kind of idea on that mill levy, mill levy funding. If we want to continue that half mill decrease trend, that's kind of where we'll start our budget creation for 2026. Just kind of want to get some feedback from the council members on that one. We've got our estimate June 15th. Yeah.
So the one, the other factor that I want to watch is the growth of inflation plus increase in residents. And I ran through a scenario like that last year and I want to watch that scenario too. It's just a, as a baseline compare. See if we're actually increasing something that we've, it's just, it's just more of another number to be watching is what it really is. It's not saying we've got to do that. It's just saying it's something else to watch. Some of the proposals that were in the legislature are similar to that, but they, they had all kinds of other whistles and bells in them. How's it going to work?
A lot of stuff in there.
So, okay. So, yeah.
Barry, do you have a feel for what a mill is going to equal value wise, like a guess?
Right now we're at 112,000 roughly. So maybe another 10, 11,000 on top of that would be that nine or 10% growth. So maybe 120, 123 ish around there.
Do you feel like, just, I know we don't have everything yet, but do you feel like, you know, a half a mill is definitely doable? Would, would one mill be, you feel like too much in one year to decrease or? How do you feel when you, when we talk about a whole mill decrease?
I think that half a mill is a great starting point. If our numbers come in higher, then yeah, we can definitely look at dropping a whole mill for sure. It's like to start at that baseline, keep that trend going that we've been doing. And when it comes to that mill levy, whatever we, however we adjust it, we just want to keep it stable and steady, you know, first constantly adjusting half a mill per year, we kind of stick to that trend. It's just the best way to do it when it comes to the mill levy amount. So we can start there for sure. So as far as revenue generation, I know we've talked a little bit about sales tax. If you guys want us to research that more in depth and then present something back to you, we'll get you some more in-depth information and more solid numbers on that as well.
From my view on sales tax, unless you tie it to a specific issue or specific project, it's a non-starter because the, the idea that you're going to use it to reduce property taxes is just, it's just a phantom idea. Within three years, I almost guarantee you it'll have no effect on property taxes. So I just don't like that idea, but if we have an idea of some specific project, we think it might be good to do towards. Okay, um, we might entertain it, but again, it has to go to a lot of the other people. So they have to approve that.
I know Ted has a whole bucket of projects he's going to go through here in a minute. So maybe we can find one in there to maybe do a comparison for, for you. And then the streets program funding, kind of keep that at that million dollar, 950,000 to million dollar mark continuously year over year. Is that our intention there as well? Just kind of see where the dollars come in at and kind of judge about it.
I feel like funding it at a million a year is probably, like you said earlier, a good starting point. And maybe we can evaluate against the other projects that we're looking at it, if it makes sense to bump it up in a given year, but probably good to just keep a steady effort at road.
Keep a level and then increase it needed.
I mean, that's my opinion. It'd be nice to do more, but a steady amount is good.
Yeah, I think we need to be increasing the roads at least in relation to inflation. If we stay at a million dollars, we're going to be following up behind again. So we're going to need a million on or something next year.
I think that's all I have for you. So appreciate it. Thanks for the feedback.
Thank you. Thanks Barry. Sorry, I got a blow early. So I guess as we start the conversation on priorities and capital improvements and different things, there's a, I kind of want to take a look back because I, I, for some reason I was looking for something and I found this presentation from 2023. And it kind of demonstrates what we do here tonight makes a difference because a lot of the things, if you remember, this is one of Ty's old presentations. So Ty, wherever you're at, shout out. 53rd Street was our number one project. We completed that last year. 40, 45th, we've, and you'll see later on in my next presentation, we've paid for all the engineering of 45th with cash. And that's a, that's a big step. I, I know Woodlawn, we, you know, had to scrimp and scratch for that, but we planned for 45th. We paid for the engineering and the right of way with cash. And that makes a big difference when you go out and start these big projects because you already start at an advantaged position. So you're not in debt already when you start a project. HVAC and I know we did phase one and I owe you a phase two. Frankly, with Keith's retirement, he knew every nut and bolt in this place. So we're getting, getting our bearings straight. But I have phase two coming to you and we'll get that energy study along with phase two to make sure what we make an educated choice in that price. But that's coming down the pipe. This is a big, big plus. The public works facility, we thought was a pipe dream. We did a lot of studies on, should we remain where we're at? Should we do it? But and, you know, an opportunity struck and it was on our list and we, we took the opportunity, which feels good. And our locking system, more of a budgetary item from my standpoint, but we'll get that on refresh resisting parks where I think the equipment's coming, going up in Eagle Lake Park right now, but that's just more of a budgetary. You'll, you'll see. We were really kind of grasping at straws back in 2023, I think, with our priorities. Overlay 53rd Street from Rock to Woodlawn. We'll talk more about that tonight. That was number seven. Number eight, we cured with fixing the pool instead of maybe looking at a splash tag, splash pack, which we thought was 350,000 and ended up being 700,000 crazy amount, if you ask me. And then we'll talk some more here about build link sidewalks. And by past, you know, we've got three phases of a pretty large multi, multi-use path going across our city in the WAMPO program, which helps. From Isley to Central Park to Isley, we got that completed. And then new parks, as you know, we're looking at the Skyview Park right now. We're designing that. Number 12 was Woodlawn expansion. Again, a lot of these later ones will, you'll see again. But I just kind of want to show there's the ERP system that we ended up doing. Ty got a terrible picture of me. So I appreciate that. And then the rec center, I just wanted to go through that real quick and then we'll go through my presentation now. I just thought it was interesting. I just thought it was interesting to see that old presentation and that what priorities, what, what way we set our, set our ship, we're going to try to go. My presentations, which, uh, starting, uh, now with this presentation, I put a copy on everybody's desk because I know it's kind of hard to see. It's really driven by some of the major projects that we have. It's really driven by road. Um, what I'm seeing on our, our big stuff, as you know, we're growing and our main roads are deteriorating at pretty quick space, uh, quick rate. Um, there's really hard, uh, I, I think it's important to understand and we touched on it, uh, a little bit at the end of Barry's presentation that we need to keep up that road maintenance. Cause uh, when I got here, we maybe scratched out a hundred and fifty thousand each year for road maintenance. Now we're up to a million. But what that did when we put zero to a hundred thousand, it created kind of a, sort of an unfunded liability on the city because now we have to play catch up on a lot of these maintenance of roads. We know with examples of Baton, those types of roads, once you let it go too far, reconstructing it's a lot, a lot harder. Um, so that's my little element there. Let's go through, this is a map of our WAMPO priorities. I thought we just kind of hit on them real quick. Forty-fifth street was number one priority. And I have them all laid out based on costs and you'll see why some of our priorities shift to the sidewalk because it's a little lower cost and, and a little more manageable to get into WAMPO. But, uh, the second priority is the first phase of, um, the sidewalk. The second, uh, or the, the second priority, and we switched this from the, the map is the third phase because we figured there's no sidewalks, major sidewalk over here. And then the third priority or fourth priority is, uh, phase three of the sidewalk path. Um. Um, and then, uh, let's see here, Rock Road would be next after those, those priorities. Um, and then we go throughout the city and touch up a few different areas. I just want to show you all in the design of what, of what we're looking at. Other thing to consider, and, uh, I, I put a kind of a ranking sheet in front of you. Um, it's on the last page. I, I was kind of doing this internally in my mind and really the K two fifty-four improvement, the interchange overpass connector road. It's probably A1 priority to me. Um, it's going to be drive a lot of, um, what we're going to do in the next 20 years. So it's really kind of in its category of its own, I thi, I feel. Um, that's a twenty, that's a fifty million dollar project that KDOT is going to hopefully, uh, get into their new transportation program. Hopefully sooner if funds come available. But, um, we're really going to have to be ready to jump on opportunity when that strikes, uh, with the connector road or any type of local match. I'm already working with Sedwick County and Kichai, all, all the partners in this project, the schools. Um, because it's going to be a major deal for Bel Air and real excited to see it, um, at least getting, uh, studied and getting, uh, on, on, uh, the books. This is out of our, uh, our, our, our sidewalk plan. I just pulled a few uh, sections. And what I did with this presentation, because we haven't looked at some of the stuff is I pulled all the recent plans or master studies we've done in the last several years, just to kind of take a refresher look at it. With the sidewalk plan, there's about a million dollars in sidewalks that just helps with connectivity throughout the whole city. We've done some of these projects, but just wanted to give a quick, give you the list. Um, so we have that in the forefront of your mind. Uh, this is what I'm talking about, the, the major, um, one as well as fifty-third street. It connects the Bel Air Rec Center to hopefully our new park, uh, in Skyview. So that's, that's going to be a nice little project, but uh, eventually this is where a, as a, as the, um, walking and biking and rolling community, this is kind of the end result of that plan. Is hopefully one day Bel Air will be completely connected with sidewalks. That'd be great. It's a great, um, vision, but you know, it's going to take a lot of years for us to get there and I want to show that. The other element we have to start to think about is our rec, recreation and parks. This, we did a master plan two years ago now, and it's been sitting on my shelf for a while. And that, and that's kind of how they kind of work, but you got to have a plan to move forward at some point. Bel Air Rec, they looked at three different parks, Bel Air Rec, or I'm sorry, Bel Air Park, some improvements there we can consider tonight. Uh, the Bel Air Rec complex, um, as you know, we've talked about a few times, it, it needs some, some major work, at least on the facility side. Something to consider tonight. Uh, Central Park was thrown in there as well. Maybe we can do something with, uh, all the land we owned in there. I think it was more of an opportunity type situation with, uh, Central Park. And then just parks in general, a lot of up, update goes on. I know Ty and I, last time we did this in 2023, we were, we just needed, you know, put a little back, put a little back. And that's kind of what we've been doing. It seems to work. So in the ranking sheet, I kind of put refreshed parks and annual budget type conversations because we're talking a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand. That's something we can do inside our annual budget and just work one by one, the smaller neighborhood parks, like we've been doing with Eagle Lake um, and other parks, um, that we have. The other big element to consider are two things. Um, City Hall, as much as, I mean, it's, it's done us really well and it still is doing us well. It needs some updating, uh, throughout. It's just something to consider. I know a bunch of council members went downstairs in our lobby and there's just a lot of dead space down there that we could potentially utilize as we continue to grow. The other, the other thing is police, um, i- if you're, i- if you ever go in there, and I know if you've done a ride around, you know, it's pretty tight over there. Um, so it's something just to keep on our radar. I know grants are available for some of that stuff and I'll keep my eye open. I know Chief is really passionate about that as well. The other element is, you know, as, as we grow, Sedwick County Fire has to grow too. So yeah, we're, we're always in the, in the mindset of if Sedwick County is going to jump somewhere, let us be a partner some, you know, in that type of, uh, combined service, uh, meaning shared facility of some sort, but a lot of that's pie in the sky and, and I don't really like, I, I like always pursuing those options. But if we're set out the plan, we should plan for something. Real quick, I know Barry gave a good review of the 2024 budget, but I couldn't help myself. Uh, I want to give just a little bit of what I see when I see our budget and some raw base numbers. So we, we collect around nine million dollars a year in revenues. Uh, five, about six, sixty-two percent or six million of that's going to go to debt payments and to pay our employees. I've done a lot of studies on employees. We run about five to six below our surrounding cities on employees. So when you look at your revenues on the general fund and you say, got to pay our debt, do we want to fire anybody? Yeah, that, that's really the decisions and that takes away sixty-two percent of our budget right there, if we don't want to do that. And now there's certain ways we can control those costs, but in general, that's what I see. We also have to give our employees tools to do their work. We have to get in contracts. And it's normal year, that's about two million dollars, twenty percent of our budget. Now Barry is going to go line by line with you. We're going to be able to shave a little bit. We're going to be able to increase a little bit. But that's just a raw number, twenty percent. So now we're up to eighty, eighty-two percent of our budget is gone just by hiring employees, paying debt and giving them the tools to work. Now we're talking street maintenance, which is eleven percent of that budget, annual budget. That's, that's with a million dollars. So really we have about seven percent of our budget that goes to priorities, that goes to major discretionary spending. And, and this is the constant battle of what we talk about when we say we want to lower, uh, lower taxes, but yet we also want to, this is some of the stuff we did in twenty, twenty twenty-four. Spent two hundred thousand on, uh, fifty, uh, forty, forty-fifth engineering. What that does is decrease our debt in future years. So we start off with more of our revenue to cut taxes if we, if we work some of this stuff in here. Um, ERP system, what is that trying to do? It's trying to avoid us having to hire more and more people as we grow. So it's helping us with that, those kind of static numbers that I showed you in the beginning with hiring employees and different things like that. Pool repairs, I meant, you can't really get around pool repairs because we either close the pool or don't. Uh, that's what we spent a little bit of that. And then about a hundred and eighty-three thousand was carried over in the CIP. And a lot of that's going to go to our, um, Skyview Park, building new parks. So a lot of this philosophy is do we want to play cash for projects? Do we want debt? Do we want to cut taxes? Do we want to do? I just wanted to try to reframe a lot of it because I think some people, um, believe that, oh, we have nine million dollars, we could spend whatever we want, we need to do this. But when you really drill down, we have about seven percent of that nine million dollars, uh, that if we want to provide the same services we've always provided. So I think it's good just to kind of get a little refresher on that. As we go through the priority ranking, uh, and that's why I'll kind of leave it up to you guys. Uh, I just wanted to note, you know, we, we've completed a lot of good projects in the last few years with the public works facility in progress, the ERP system, park, um, uh, fifty-third street, uh, pool repairs, all that kind of stuff. Um, but here's, I know it's hard to see and we can work off this sheet here. What I was kind of talking about, uh, A1, probably the K two fifty-four, and I, I don't know what that's going to cost the city. I, I guarantee you, I'm going to work really hard to make sure it's very, the minimal it can be. Uh, but we know there's going to be some projects that the city is going to want to piggyback on, uh, as we go. And that, that's where I kind of leave it to you guys. The overlay of fifty-third, uh, to Woodlawn to Rock is more of a carryover from our previous, uh, priorities. I put forty, forty-fifth street there on number one. Um, I, a few of these, if you look over the estimated city costs, a few of these net like three through six are, are pretty minimal costs to the city, but we get that eighty-twenty split from WAMPO. So it's really leveraging, uh, grant funds to our greatest ability with the greatest, um, um, impact to our citizens. So I ranked those a little higher. And then Rock Road was seven. And then that's where I leave it up to you guys where I'm just kind of putting stuff on the board to set a schedule. And then you can rank whatever one you want. Uh, the, I know the rec center is going to need something in the next five to, I, I, five years would, would probably be it. And, uh, so that, th- those are a few of the, the projects. I also put, um, Oliver from, uh, thirty-seventh to forty-fifth Woodlawn. Um, from forty-fifth to fifty-third. Um, I think Bel Air Park, once we get Woodlawn complete, is probably going to need a pretty major, uh, a nice refresh. Um, and then that's where we look at our growth patterns and see where our police department and city hall are at, at that time. Just my random thought. And then other projects to consider really just basically every other major street we have because we know we're going to grow. And the hard part, when I look at the map, is all the development we have going on and, and on web and greenwich that, you know, the, just might be something to consider as we, and then K two fifty-four, as we continue this process. But I'll give the floor up and you guys can kind of discuss, discuss amongst yourselves and, uh, feel free to fill out a rank sheet if you want. I'll probably create a, um, slideshow kind of like Ty. So in, uh, you know, three or four years, we are, every year, we should probably update it and see where we're at.
I still think that item two there is, is going to be part of a, item A1 or one A. Because that's going to be a commuter road. It's, it's almost, there's just no other place to put one in Bel Air. And, uh, that's going to be required from a divergent diamond interchange. So I, I just think it needs to be part of that. If we had to pay for it out of that, then, then we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but we don't know that right now.
Yes. I guess I should start with, exactly. Should start with this for anybody watching at home or anybody. This isn't approval or even completed projects. This is literally a plan. So don't, nobody think that this is what's going to happen anytime, uh, or, you know, here, 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 it's more of a plan, a guide map, a roadmap from, for us.
This, we don't make decisions.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Have discussions here.
Yeah, I'll second that mayor. I think fifty-third from Woodlawn all the way to Webb is probably along the lines of a frontage, backage road discussion with whatever ends up happening with two fifty-four. And really I've, I've driven that stretch between Rock and Webb a lot the last few weeks and that road is starting to not look great. Um, and I know that was replaced not that long ago, but I think some of the additional traffic it's bearing is starting to add up. So I would agree. I think that whole three miles is probably something that will be a part of a two fifty-four discussion. Also, all your matching is assumed too.
Very assumed. They're a little high. I, uh, it's eighty-twenty, but after going through one, I kind of did, some I did thirty, some I did forty, uh, it's a sixty, forty, um, just to get a realistic, you know? Because if you remember any WAMPO project, engineering, right of way purchase, any railroad, uh, all those, all those are a hundred percent city and then it's just construction and construction inspection that are eighty-twenty split. So it's not misleading, but it's a little, uh, we have to be on our, you can't just put twenty percent and drag the Excel spell down, sell down.
Well, and, and items four, five and six are already in the MTP for, for WAMPO. And they're like, each of those is a year separated. Uh, and I can't remember which one's which, but that's, they're each separated by a year. Um, so they're already in the plan. That doesn't mean they're getting funded because they, they have to move to the TIP to be funded, but they're not there. They're in the MTP right now.
Yeah. I mean, this might be the appropriate time to kind of throw up, uh, the discussion of other revenue sources. So, I mean, waiting on WAMPO to build those projects, we could be waiting a long time. Um, so I mean, I guess in my mind, when you talk about revenue sources and you mentioned sales tax as a potential that you could put, you could put up on a ballot and get the city's vote, you know, on. At one initiative you might think about is parks and paths or parks wreck and paths or whatever the bucket project you want to do. And I'm not saying it'd be for those specific path projects, but I think that is something worth considering. If we hear our citizens and give our citizens a chance to vote on spending an additional revenue on enhancements that we are not currently providing, or at least an upgrade to enhancements that we, or upgrade to services we have now. Um, that would be the only, I agree with you, mayor. Aside from picking a specific, very well-defined vision or project that you can support, it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to put it on a ballot.
The, uh, sales tax is only going to bring in a couple of hundred thousand.
Five, five, five hundred ninety a year.
That's, that's at one percent, right?
What?
If you do a one percent. Okay. Uh, so, uh, one thing to think about, and WAMPO is currently looking for this. And so maybe this would just be something for you to look into Ted and talk with Chad about. They are looking for, uh, project for their active transportation plan. Um, and maybe we could ask them to revisit those three bike paths issues that are, are on our list here. And maybe we could throw some other items in there as well, uh, to look at those active transportation. Because, uh, that's some projects they are looking for. And I don't know exactly, I ca, I can't explain exactly where they are. That's why you really need to talk with Chad about this. Okay. But, but they are looking for stuff with their regional active transportation plan. Uh, but, and that was just something that just came out this afternoon. So, so you know.
Yeah, I do know KDOT has had a renewed focus on active transportation just the last few years. So there's probably are state funds that go along with what Lambo is trying to promote.
And that could be a part, but part of it.
Really, some of these crossings are, are big too. I, I think that, that they can include crossings and.
I, I think a school crossing on Woodlawn at Isley is, is, is key. I think one along Oliver at, at, uh, whatever that street is, the cross street there.
Willow Point or something.
Willow Point maybe, wherever they decide the right place is, would be another important one to do.
I think the Lysy Crossing, which is already on this list for, uh, the high schools.
Yeah. Is that a need? Uh, and the only reason I ask that is because life changed a lot since I was in high school and, uh, I don't know how many people actually walk to high school. Okay. Um, so is that, and I don't know, it might be a need, but I, I just don't know.
Yeah, I think that one's maybe a potential opportunity to partner with the school district because as Bel Air residents are opened up to Northeast High School, uh, through that application process, I think we would probably see a growing demand from the homes to the south.
Could be.
So it could be something to partner with too. It's not necessarily all on us. I think it's a partnership. But I don't know, I guess I'm just throwing that out there that a parks to paths might be a way to, I mean, some of these projects are a million dollars. So I don't know how that process would work and we can, we can discuss that further in more detail later. But if we can bond that and collective or ten year, how that works, but as far as generating.
Yeah.
And doing the projects, but that's certainly a way that we could actually start making some progress on parks and, and. and the rec, you know, some other things that, that are on that list, but maybe fall a little further down the priority list than some of these bigger road projects.
Our old public works facility. When does that go on the auction block?
Yeah.
As a revenue generator.
And that's, and that's kind of where, let's get moved into the new one and we'll start having those, those conversations here soon. I, I'll need direction from, from you guys. I know we've discussed it briefly a long time ago, but not sure what was decided.
Yeah, but it's, remember it's got a little bit of a problem to it in that that water building there is not moving. And that's, that keeps your access from Woodlawn limited. It's not totally gone, but it's limited. It, it will never get any better than it is today. Okay. Because of that building. And you're not moving that building without spending multi-million dollars. So.
I think the city will find that we have use for that lot, that we don't need to sell it.
And that's where I, let me, let me think and have a good, you know.
So Ted. That was my plan all along is to not get rid of it. That's how I felt about it from the beginning.
So Ted, another thing I noticed on the list is as you get further down the list, say eight to 15, well, not necessarily road projects, but some of, some of the talk about city hall and police and rec center, it feels like they maybe connect a little bit. Like if you, if you do something with one, maybe you can move some of your services from city hall into a, a rec center or an expanded rec center or new rec center.
Yeah.
It allows you to expand the PD or some other combination of those. I know we visited about that briefly in the past, but.
That's, that's a hundred percent. It's hard to set priorities on this because I think as we grow, our facilities are going to kind of grow with us and, but that's going to take money to do that. And it's just something on my radar. I, I know police are really starting to get a little tight and we do have some empty space over here. So, yeah, we just, we probably need to rethink it as we continue to grow. How we want to organize ourselves.
Going to throw in about Rock Road there too. I don't think it's our responsibility until 45th Street. I don't know if you're just talking about a joint project with Wichita, but Wichita's responsibility for Rock Road is from the railroad to the 45th intersection.
Including the intersection.
Yeah, that's just how it was labeled on the WAMPO. So I can.
Well, I think that the thought there was the integrity aspect of, of going in, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll change that to 45th.
That's still kind of up in the air.
I was kind of working off the WAMPO and WAMPO probably wants Wichita and Bel Air and both in the single projects. So that's why they labeled it that way. So that.
So it happened at the same time, but cost share.
Yeah, yeah.
So our cost would be three fourths of that or something like that. It wouldn't be.
Yeah, there would be, there'd be a mix in that. Yeah. I imagine.
And if you're throwing out integrity, I think we should plan on never seeing integrity. I don't think they're going to be here.
And Rock Road from 53rd to 254 isn't on this list. I assume that would be somewhere on the list.
And it's, it's on the other projects to consider and it kind of goes back to what we've been talking about is if we have all the, the interchange overpass, I'm pretty sure from 254 to 53rd, those roads are going to get some treatment to get people off the highway and east-west.
I had a question about city hall. I know a little over a year ago at a workshop, there was some pretty extensive discussion about like how Park City meets you at the door and takes advantage of all that space. But beyond those sorts of issues, you mentioned you have some space over here. Are there any maintenance issues that we're not being wise by dealing with now? Or is it all really kind of reconfiguring to maximize space at this point?
Maximize space, different style service, kind of like the Park City type, we can rethink that. I think the, the designers, you know, have that lobby coming in and you have all these, you know, really, I got, you know, two, I need two clerks, you know, a permit and water and sewer. And then they all work hard, but a lot of it's move in, move outs, account services. So we can rethink kind of the forward-facingness of, of our city with that type of money. The, as far as maintenance idea, I mean, we're updating HVAC 2013, we got a new roof. So I, you know, I think, I think our overall, we've been maintaining this facility the way you would want us to. I, I know the, with the ins and outs and gut, water's sometimes a fun project for us. Cause you know, I know why a lot of city buildings are just squares. Cause it's.
One thing that I, and I, I don't know the answer to this, so this is something you have to ask the police, but are there activities that the police are doing behind the secured areas that can be done in less secured areas? And, and I don't know that. I don't know if there is anything. I mean, obviously when you're doing investigations, you got to do that in secured areas, but you can't keep property in an unsecured area and those kinds of things. I get that. But if there are any activities that could be moved to an unsecured area, maybe that's an opportunity to, to help give them some more space in the secured area. So I don't know.
Chief will be here next Tuesday asking for a police vehicle. So I, I'm sure he'll enlighten us quite a bit on that. And, and I think a lot of that would be more of short-term as we continue to grow, grow, grow. We still need to keep a lot of that, but as you guys know, we're just trying to get to the next 10 years. And if we continue growing the way we are and everything falls into place, we're.
But if you're looking at, and, and, and just, just spitballing here, not saying we're done, do this, but if you're looking at reconfiguring the, the ground floor of this building, okay? Maybe there's an opportunity there to say, hey, this place can be for additional police shoes, but it's not secured. Or do we need to secure it? You know, because that drives the cost.
Yep.
So, and as you look at those things, and maybe that takes an architect. I don't know.
It usually does.
Yeah.
My last little question on city hall was we've been talking about the changing the entry system and the issues that can be there with the keys and stuff. What, it's relatively cheap at like 50,000. What's been the delay on, on that?
Kind of like the HVAC. Who am I going to give it to when we're updating a ERP system? To say we run a tight ship is kind of an understatement. I, I can't give one of my employees one more project right now. Cause we're, we're running out in high. So.
I'm going to tell you that there's not some benefit to doing those kinds of systems. But if you're thinking that it's going to be a labor savings, I think you're only kidding yourself. I've worked those systems and they're just as much work to me as a key system.
Well, and that's, I don't, I don't have the knowledge base that someone that would take on this project would have. So we would discover all those probably if we had it.
There, there are other advantages to them. I get that, but, but they, they take a lot of maintenance work.
They do. Yeah. Any glaring, I mean, I'll let you guys rank and then turn in and then we'll, we'll revisit it, take 10 minutes, revisit it. If you guys are okay.
Want that tonight?
You can take it home. We're not, we're not building, we're, we're not building 45th in the overnight.
So, so there's two sheets that have ranked priorities on them. Which one do you want us to use?
I just give you two of them?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's just a slideshow presentation. Again.
Oh, this has the other projects.
Yeah, this has other projects.
We'll do the one without the other projects.
Yeah.
I had one more question on the rec center. Cause I remember, I think Barry at one point had talked about, not any of these big, big upgrades from the plan, but just some basic things like the benches sinking into the ground. Where are we at on some of those like minor upgrades or repairs?
We're at the 2026 budget right, in the next few months. That's, that's really what we're going to.
Okay.
Have to, have to address those minor things. And now you talk, you know, a lot of times we can, if we wanted to hire an architect and see what that would look like, get a vision in front of us that like with the, even city hall upgrades or anything like that. Just get a vision in front of us and something to shoot for. Cause a lot of times we're just, you know, it's productive, but we don't have a number to it. I like to see some numbers on it. So maybe in 2026, we fund a few, one study or something on facilities and how we can maximize our space or do what we want. That would be really helpful for me. A little more micro than macro of, hey, redo all this, redo all this, $8 million. You know, maybe we go a macro version of how we can be the most efficient with our facilities that we currently have. We've got a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a statement on that note. I, I think the rec center, any sort of plan. You know, I know we've done a very high level one on those few parks in the rec center. I think if we move anything forward on that, it needs to involve a larger group. And I think having citizens and, you know, getting citizens involved in some sort of a task force or whatever that is to really dig into that deeper before we spend the money to do a consultant type deal. I guess I just want to, I just want to say that I think it would be important for our community to provide a lot of input before we take that step.
Yeah.
But I do think we, we should do that. And I do think that that's something our community is probably going to want to invest in. Just forgot to throw that out there. I don't, I guess what I'm saying is I don't want to hire a consultant just to.
No, no. And I was, I was more of a city hall conversation. I think rec's a big apple to bite.
Involvement.
Yep. More operations. We ready to move on or do you want more questions Jim? Yeah, yeah.
I think we've pretty much covered it all.
Yep.
Do we need to get you this sheet back or I guess it's this sheet we're going to give back to you?
Either sheet. I could probably work with it. It just might be a little harder to see.
Okay. So, that'll be our homework assignment. So this is going into discussion on boards.
Yep.
Introduction by the city manager, which I think we already know who he is, but maybe he needs to reintroduce himself.
Yeah, we're going to get the PowerPoint back up here real quick. That's my fault, Ryan. So really had a few people contact me and I think it's a worthwhile conversation to spend a little time on. First we'll start with, you know, why do we have advisory boards, task force? Not really. It's, it's really not. It's just definitions. So I'll, I'll try to read them off. But for their expertise and advice, they provide specialized knowledge and advice on various topics such as planning, zoning, public utilities, environmental issues, helping city officials make informed decisions. Help with policy document development. Think about the UAC's conservation plan. They're able to dive really deep in that and provide something for you. And then kind of what Tyler mentioned just previously, public engagement. It really sets a bridge between government and community, foster that public participation and decision-making. And sometimes I find it very taskful and the next slide just kind of shows like the Aurora Park gravel. We were talking in this chamber for, you know, hours, just go getting nowhere until we got a task force together to really dive into the issues. They brought the, forth the recommendation and, and we accepted it. And once we get the ditches all done, we're going to lay a bunch of new rock in probably June or July of this year. So that really is kind of what I'm talking about when I say we, instead of just talking about it, we really engage a community of people with like minds and they're able to dive into either the finance portion or anything of that. Right now we have a planning commission. Their bylaws are going to be reviewed by Paula right now and they're going to kind of update and review those bylaws in April, May, planning commission. We have a utility advisory committee. I think there's this minor update coming up next Tuesday for you guys and a tree board. Before we get to the tree board, Cara, I asked her to come because her and Tamara Blackwell, the Miss America, were really passionate about our, our walk and our trails program. And frankly, I see it every night. A lot of people walk in Bel Air. I think we're a really active community. So that's just something I wanted her to report on what their group is doing, just for your consideration. And then Rebecca can come up and we can talk a little bit about tree board, but no decisions are being made tonight. As you know, it's a workshop. I just think it's important when I hear, when I get approached from citizens that are wanting to do more, I, I give them the opportunity to address it with you guys so that you know what I'm, what I'm hearing. And we have better communication that way and it's not tied into a three-minute public comment section. So Cara, if you wanted to come up, I think he'll, he'll put up the slides.
She has PowerPoint too? Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Cara Moment. I'm a longtime resident of Bel Air. And through some of my walks, I've seen a few of you. Hopefully I'll see more of you. But today I wanted to talk a little bit about active transportation. I'm excited about the fact that that's already come up a few times and the fact that the Kansas Department of Transportation is really trying to push that a bit more across the state and across some of the local and rural communities. And I don't know if anybody recognizes that photo, but that's in the.
I do.
It's backed by the Catholic care center, which is just a really beautiful place to walk if you haven't been, had a chance to do that. But a couple of years ago, I was a part of the Kansas Walking College. And that was really a group, it was a six-month program to try to get grassroots advocates for people to involve themselves in active transportation, which basically is, you know, walking, riding, rolling. And just differentiating that a little bit from vehicular transportation. And during that process, I'd never met Rebecca before. She happened to be in that same class. We were in different cohorts and we were each asked to make up a project. And the project that I had really was focused on, how could I get more people interested in walking in terms of coming together as a group and coming together with kind of like-minded, you know, what you're interested in? How can we find ways to look at Bel Air as a place to do that more effectively? Cause I know a lot of times people go other locations, other cities. And so my plan really focused a bit on that. Can we go to the next slide please? Thanks. Talked a little bit about it being the walking, biking, rolling. It seems like a mouthful, active transportation, but I think it was just their way to kind of bundle up, you know, human-powered movement, for another way to say it. But one of the things that, that KDOT has done, this is the, probably the first time in 25 years that they've made this type of an investment in ensuring that people who are involved in active transportation have, have a safer, better environment. So they're really trying to work that and get that more within the communities themselves. So if you go to the next slide, it shows kind of the things they're really focused on and the goals that they're wanting to do. Safety obviously is a huge one and it's the first one that pops up, you know, trying to reduce the frequency and the severity of incidents where pedestrians or cyclists, you know, are involved in crashes. The equity piece, really looking at people who actually rely on this type of transportation to get to their jobs, to get to essential services. The mobility piece overall, how can we get people more involved? I like the community health and vibrancy because a lot of what I've heard tonight really connects with what we're talking about there. It's actually looking at the infrastructure that improves health, impacts our environment. And ultimately the quality of life in that last piece, that spurring of economic development that I think is really critical. When people are looking to move to new communities and neighborhoods, they're looking for communities that have enough pride in their, in their infrastructure that they're wanting people to appreciate being in the community that they live in. And, you know, the sidewalks are a part of it, the streets, all of those pieces. The paradigm shift that it's talking about there is how do we normalize active transportation? Today, we have more people that are driving than walking. And so it feels like, well, if you're doing that, that's just kind of a exercise thing or it's, you know, something you can do because you don't have a vehicle. But in reality, some people are using that on a regular basis to get to the places that mean something to them. And then lastly, how do you sustain the longevity of the investments and the funding sources that are made? You talked a little bit earlier about how WAMPO is looking for a plan for active transportation. There are a lot of people that are really interested in that right now. So over time, how do you now sustain the investment that they're willing to make in something like that? So if we go to the next slide, this is kind of a little Bel Air history. Here we go. So when we look at Bel Air from, you know, its inception, the idea is that it really was a bedroom community, right? People build homes to live here, to sleep here, but basically everything else, when they went to work, when they went to a restaurant, to their house of. when they went to a restaurant, to their house of worship, to a school, it was all get in a car and go someplace. Because, you know, it wasn't nearby. It wasn't in the city. That maybe hasn't completely flipped, but the idea now is that we're starting to have some different types of development. Everything from the businesses and organizations that are coming here to some other things, we're just starting to change as a community. When we first moved here, I would say the number of residents was probably less than 2,000, right around that number. So we've over quadrupled that amount. And, you know, exciting things are happening right now. Talking about the city streets, the bike plan initially indicated that when you looked at the streets in, in the city, probably 14% of them, there were sidewalks on both sides. 19% had them on one side. 67% had no sidewalks at all. And we still see that in a lot of areas of the community. That particular picture there is one area where that is the case. It's not difficult to walk, even if you don't have a sidewalk. But safety and understanding, you know, what that means, I think is really important, just to have that, that cognizance about it. That being said, when we look at the work on Woodlawn and you hear the negative complaints when it comes to vehicular traffic, I can tell you that people that are involved in active transportation love the fact that there's a multi-use pathway. And on a day like today, you're going to see lots of people over there. They're biking, they're riding, they're walking their dogs, they're taking, you know, their kids over to the park. And that's a really different scene than what was there before that multi-pass was, path was there. You know, if you have a lot of snow or bad weather, you might not see it. But I have failed to see any day when I've gone out, when it's pleasant out, that people aren't using that path. And it's been really kind of an exciting change. Lastly, I talked a little bit about the parks and you did as well, Ted. And I think it's interesting, the parks that are here, the six parks, most of them are, are built around kind of the children's playsets, that type of thing. But if we had a way that we could connect the parks using a path or some other means where we can come from one area to another, that would be kind of exciting because most of the survey data that we've had within Bel Air has talked a lot about a disconnectedness of the city. And I think this is one more way to kind of bring people together, really in this transportation network, if you will. So we can go to the next slide, please. So a few of the benefits related to active transportation, looking at having information that goes both directions. So as a city, speaking to constituents that have this at an, as an interest or a passion about it, but also being able to have citizens speaking back to, hey, you know, this would be helpful if we had this. Or we really don't have to have that as an expenditure if we just fix these things. And it's really a way to have a real time conversation as opposed to, you know, kind of a more passive, you know, here's the notes, that kind of thing. Again, looking at how we can target possibly surveys for a particular group. So if we have a quorum in a group that's set up, which we do, I would say there's a distribution list right now of people that engage in active transportation of about probably 25 to 30 people. All the time we're looking for more, but I can tell you, there are many people that are walking that have absolutely nothing to do with it. They just do it on their own. They want to get out. But if they see that the city is supporting another way to get them involved and engaged with something that they like, I think that could be a real positive for us. So as a city grows and develops, so will the group of people that are walking, biking and rolling through the city. I mean, it's just a natural thing to, to start to occur. This is another way to provide additional resources and partnerships. I will say this, anybody that's a part of a group like this, they're not based on anything other than the fact that they live in the city, but they work many other places. And a lot of corporations and organizations are willing to even invest in communities where their employees work when it comes to health, when it comes to being active. And I would say that last point, actually assisting in the audits that take place for walking and biking. The picture there to the left is showing the, the WAMPO count event, which several of us participated in last fall. It took a couple of years actually to get them to do a count in Bel Air because we're always kind of seen in that, as that shadow city to Wichita. So I think this is a way in, and I think that as we continue to have more pathways, there are going to be opportunities to do that further. If we go to the next slide, we can talk a little bit about how this benefits the citizens. Again, it's kind of the reverse of the other piece. They're going to be able to get real time information as opposed to, hey, I saw this, you know, on Facebook. It's more direct and more direct about what they care about. Being able to see increased safety, I think that's really critical and important. I like riding bikes also, but I won't ride on the street anymore. I feel like people are way too distracted. So if there are places to ride and we can do it within our own city, I, I mean, what's more exciting than that? Maybe not to everyone here, but it is to me. So when we look at creating a greater awareness about the bike and pedestrian plan, until I got into the Kansas Walks group, I had no idea that we even had a plan. So my bad, you know? But, but we're at a point now where how can we share that information more broadly to people that care about it? We'll have some additional opportunities to do some different things. I, I will say Ted brought up Tamara Blackwell, and I know you've all met her and she's an amazing person. One of the things that she indicated is, you know, is new better, building new and, and better things better, or fixing what we have? And her comment was she, she recollected a time when she went from her house to the rec center. And there were some places where the sidewalk just cut off. She had to end up riding, you know, in the street to get there. And so I can, I can see that when I'm in a car and I'm driving down, let's just say, Hedgerow, for example, the street Hedgerow. That's where one of the paths is supposed to go at some point. When I'm driving, I don't see any issues with the sidewalk. There is a sidewalk, right? But if I'm walking, I can see that sometimes the earth is shifted. The, the brick is up a little bit higher, the sidewalk is up a little bit higher. And for someone who is in needing an assist in a wheelchair or has a walker or has low vision, that's more problematic for them. So I think those are things to consider if we fix the pieces that are out there.
Cara, that, that hit, that meeting hit me hard because I, I was thinking new, brand new sidewalk, she was going to say. And she goes, no, just, I want to, I want everything connected so I can get from point A to point B. And I, it, it just, it really highlights what I think we need versus what Tamara thinks versus what. It, it just, it was an interesting conversation between us because I never thought of it. I never had to roll a wheelchair, you know, down the sidewalk. So just an interesting perspective. Thanks for bringing that up.
But there is a, there is the, we do have the sidewalk program that we can get those fixed if we know about them. We don't know about them, we can't get them fixed.
And I, and I think that's a good point because I think this is a way to take a group like this and say, you know, if you have opportunities where improvements are needed, here's the path to do that. And it's not the complaining path, which is, you know, I tend to complain when they're unhappy.
An education path, an engagement path. Yep.
Agreed, agreed. But yeah, that was enlightening, just as enlightening as it is if you're driving versus walking the sidewalks too, I think. So the other piece of this is being able to participate in a walking series. I know the first year, I know Rebecca had done like a month of, of walks that she did, which was really fun and interesting. Last year we did a series and it was from April to August. And we tried to use as many of the parks as we could that actually had walking paths. So we did Eagle Lake and Central Park and we did Alley Park. And, you know, each time there's different numbers of people that can and want to come. But at the end of the day, having that as kind of a little bit of a system is, it's kind of something to look forward to, something different and unique. And then, you know, obviously to be able to maintain and increase fitness levels, we have a lot of people that walk regularly in the rec center. And a, a lot of them are seniors and walk in the mornings around the center. But there's just something about being able to get outside and walk and, you know, feel the beauty of the day. And, you know, even allergies may get people, but just seeing how beautiful everything looks when it's looming right now. So if we can go to the next one. So this is just kind of a plug, if you will. So coming up on Saturday, we have the Spring Festival and we've got a little warm up walk, uh, 12, at 12:45, right before all of the egg hunt situation goes on. Last year, we thought warm up walk was a great idea because it was really chilly. This year I think it's going to be 80 degrees. It's going to be pretty warm this weekend. But still, it's to go around the outside walking path, you know, take a few laps or whatever. And it's just a great way to get to know people, spend some time. You don't have to walk any particular speed, but it's, it's a fun thing to do. We're going to do again, another walking series and we're looking at really the best times and days where people can do that. I would say other people are probably even more interested in biking. So I'm constantly looking for people that are willing to do that and kind of spearhead that a little bit more. But lastly, May is National Bike Month. I know that the Bike Walk Wichita does a lot of things that some people here are involved in. And then May 7th is a bike to school day. Safe routes to school, which I believe is also part of KDOT. They're trying to get a little bit more energy behind that. And I think that's something that actually could work here too, as part of this. So that's really kind of all I wanted to share. And I really appreciate you taking the time and listening to me this evening. Any questions, any thoughts?
Well, thank you, Cara. Appreciate that. And yeah, I did join you a few times on those walks. And that was, that was always, that's fun. And I'll do it again when time allows, but, and I know about it, so. But I agree with you. We'd like to do more, you know? Sometimes it's just a, how much can you do? And how much money is there available to do it? So it's always a challenge, but.
Yeah. Well, the, the good news is on the walking. It's, you know, not a lot of extra equipment for most people. And it's usually not a big expense either. But with all of the development that is happening, I think that, you know, it's a real win for a group of people that want to do this.
But please spread the word about if there's a broken sidewalk, a misflying sidewalk, we do have a, a program to get those fixed.
Yes.
Should we make a pamphlet available that they can hand out at some of these walking events?
Might be a possibility, something to think about.
Sorry Ted, I know this.
Oh no, something else.
Well, you gave us homework.
We probably. Never again.
Turn around.
Cara, thank you so much for coming tonight. I think what you shared was, was really important. And you mentioned safe routes. I've been involved with the safe routes to school planning with WAMPO. And they are doing a, a pretty significant focus on that right now. And Wichita Public Schools is actually participating in that planning process. And so right now they're going through a process of selecting the, the first wave of schools that they'll do planning on. And that, that'll be a, there's over 200 schools in the WAMPO region. So that's going to be a long drawn out process. But I think what's more important is sort of the grassroots, you know, education and advocacy and, and a community group that can come together that has what you've described. So I really appreciate you spearheading that. And I really appreciate you coming and presenting tonight.
Well, I, I agree. And I do want to say one thing about the safe route to school. That is a study. It's, it's not, and all it'll come out with is a plan. If we don't take some actions to implement the plan, this is going to be another study goes on the shelf. And we spent some nice money to get a nice study. And I hate seeing us do that. So I, I hope that we can take, learn from that plan and then move forward with some of that, those ideas. So, but anyway, thank you.
Yep. And, and really when I had that meeting, I, I mean, we have a great grassroots effort as a tool in our toolbox as we start talking about how do we invest more in sidewalks? How do we, how do we do this? How do we leverage grant funding? I meant, I did the KDOT cost share program for one of our, just, just trying to get grants. And Cara wrote me a letter of support. So like a lot of that stuff is really invaluable to staff when we're trying to work out a problem like this, that's going to take multi-years and a lot of money. So I wanted, I appreciate it. I just want Cara to kind of give an update of her, what their efforts are, are being. And so now, you know, you have that tool in your toolbox when, when, as we approach these big priorities. The other issue we, or an issue, but I wanted, wanted to discuss a little bit is the tree board. They, they do amazing work as well. Their bylaws, we, we mentioned this a little bit, our, our little, I know Rebecca is going to come up and talk a little bit about it, but they're, they're pretty directed at, you know, public education. At, at the request of the governing body, mayor and city council can request some things. And then community engagement, which is a hold an annual Arbor Day. So we might want to do some adjustments. I know, I know Rebecca is also has a good, good passion for this, for the environment in this. So I wanted to give her some opportunity to come up and talk about kind of the, what she's saying in the tree board as we're talking about boards and what direction they're wanting to go.
Some of what you've talked about is getting the finances, having the money. And one of the things that's overlooked is there's foundation money in Kansas, lots of foundation money. And with the Bike Walk Wichita, that was very clear. There was cities all over Kansas getting 10 million, 15 million for projects. But what they had different was people organized. We have to have the community engaged. When you look at the breeze, it's got a whole page of police reports every month. It doesn't say anything about all the things you're doing. So I'm surprised I'm engaged with this community. I didn't know. I didn't know. And that's because it's not coming through in the breeze. So it's kind of the information exchange. In order to build community engagement, you have to have stuff out there. You have to have it out there earlier. Not like so late, like this is what we did, but this is what we're doing. On the board, we need more people. We've got six people. We can't do what we're supposed to do with six people. We need to be allow, allow everybody that lives in Bel Air to be a member, anybody that's interested. Because for the most part, it's older people and they're coming, going, and actually younger people come and go too. So if we open it up to everybody and then just have maybe 10 or 15 that are voting members, that's not so clunky. It's more doable. But we're so, it's old, that ordinance is old and it needs to be updated. We need to figure this out, but it's the engagement of people that's going to make a difference. And that's everywhere. People don't know what's happening in the city. And I think they deserve the right to know. And also if you have their input, you're going to have better solutions going forward. That's all I have. Oh, one other thing. We've talked a lot. So if you look, go down Lysy, you won't see trees. The ordinance says there's supposed to be trees. There isn't. We're supposed to also, we're supposed to be saving if there's a grove of trees, if there's a group of trees, we're supposed to be saving those natural areas. When developers come in, they don't have a plan. I don't see the plan. And then it's after the fact, when you go into these communities, into these developments that you see, there's no green spaces. There's no sidewalks. There's no connectivity. What was the plan? What was the plan for them to connect? What was, what is happening? The tree board members would like to see the plan that's being presented to the planning committee. So we have an opportunity to look and think about, okay, how is that affecting? We know what's happening in that area. We as Bel Air, as we go forward, if we save some of these green spaces and make them nice. If you look at Eagle Lake, always people are walking around that lake. That really has high value. If you go down Woodlawn, there's a pond there. No one can walk around it because it's so steep. If you look at what they've done in the developments and you drive through, those aren't green spaces for people. Those aren't green spaces for geese. They're not green spaces for anything. They're just detention ponds with steep sides that are going to be a problem as we go forward. And ecologists know this. So there's more information that can be shared with the community. And our community is well educated. If they have more education, more opportunities to come in and share what they know, we're going to come up with better solutions. So that's, that's all I have.
So just in regard to the, the trees and parks and plans like that, one of the issues, I know we've talked about this. I know we've talked about this, you and I previously, is that we currently don't have that in our ordinance, whereas a sidewalk, it is in our ordinance. They have to have a sidewalk in a new development. And I would like us to see if we can't get some language in our ordinances that says you need to put trees and parks in there. And we've, we've had this kind of conversation that Ted and I have, and Maria and I have had that conversation before. But we just got to figure out what that looks like because that's difficult to write that legal language and make it make sense and then get what you need.
Communities all over the country have done that. And our community had that. In the community development plan, there was supposed to be 20% left as green spaces.
And they're made it to the ordinances. And that's, that's a problem with developers because it's not in the ordinance. But we need, I'm agreeing with you, we need to work on that and get that done. Because I know it's done and we just need to find out.
We can just start copying others. We need a lot more.
What we do in Bel Air. So, and, and I don't know how you, how we can make that dialogue work, but I agree with you also that it would be great if you could have that dialogue to review plans that developers are coming up with. That has to go to the planning commission today. Okay. Now, I don't know, maybe somebody here has an idea of how to trigger that.
Similar with Cara Mo Man. If she looked at that, she'd be able to tell you, is there connectivity? And are the sidewalks? If we have that opportunity, and I, maybe you have to put that into your ordinance, that we have that opportunity to look. There's, you know, Leeds Developments all over the country, there's, communities are doing this everywhere. And they're doing it everywhere because the value in the community goes up. People are happier, healthier. The value of our homes, the value of our buildings, the value of the community goes up. When people feel safe, when they go out the door, when they, they can connect with one another, they can talk to one another. And then the decisions being made by the city, I, I'm surprised. I'm sitting here, I didn't know this stuff that you're doing. And I talk to you quite a bit, it seems.
I was going to say elaborate what the.
The, your list. I didn't know necessarily about your list. I don't sit and watch your meetings.
This is the first time the council's heard it.
Yeah. But I mean, you, you have a whole list with numbers. And to me, I think it's a good list. I just, I think, I, I think people need to be more engaged.
But, and may I ask, just, we don't have, we do literally everything we can possibly do. We broadcast it online. I, I, I'll continue to work with you and see what we can do in the Breeze and online. There's just a certain, are you like social media or, I'm trying to get an idea from you.
It's a tough situation. And I don't think it's, I'm, I don't mean to make it sound like I'm dumping it on you. What I'm saying is our community, our world has gotten this way. We used to have journalists that would come into these meetings and tell. Pardon?
I can't, I'm going to try to.
I'm not, I'm not, that's what I didn't want it to be, like you're fixing the problem. It's our problem. It's not your problem. It's our problem. Meaning the community doesn't necessarily know. And I don't think that's good for the community. I talked to the kids at the school and they, I'm surprised what they don't know anymore. And it's not good for our communities. And there's a lot written on this. Robert Putnam talks about this extensively. So I'm not meaning to sound, hey Ted, this is your problem. What I'm trying to figure out is how to engage. It's a struggle. I'm struggling with the Tree Board, how to engage. Increasing the numbers is going to help. In the Breeze, you have a whole thing of police reports. I think it's a whole lot better to say, hey, the city is looking at these. Let's have a open house, come and talk. Try to some other way. I don't know.
But the, the city gets one page and we do as much as we can on one page with the advertisement. We don't write or publish the Breeze. The police blob is what the Breeze chooses. They say, we'll allow the police blob. And there are some studies that it actually helps with enforcement to let people know that we're out arresting and, and, and doing that sort of thing. So the Breeze isn't our publication, the city of Bel Airs, it's Arc Valley.
So I just, I'm seeing some things that to me aren't helpful to develop a sense of community. So I am thinking of things that would possibly be more helpful. And when I see a police blog, you're saying you can't do anything about that. I thought it might be an opportunity. So.
I'm going to kind of throw this back your way and I don't know if you can get any traction or not, but have you tried submitting an article to the Breeze and asking them to publish it? Because they publish a lot of stuff.
Yes, I have.
I see no point in like, who graduated high school that lived in Wichita 10 years ago and stuff like that. So I think maybe if you provided something, they might publish it. I'm going to give them.
I have, I have tried that.
Somebody has to write it for them. They're not going to.
I have tried that and they, yeah, that hasn't been the case. They did not publish it.
They did not publish your.
Did not publish it. They'll publish it probably if I pay them. And I've thought about it. But I just am trying to build community. It's all about community. I think the best decisions that we're going to make are building community.
Publisher, which would probably take something like posting to Facebook or something and having people call them and say, why aren't you publishing these kinds of articles?
Well, we just had that discussion just recently because the Tree Board was submitting articles to go into the Breeze. And it was determined that there wasn't enough room. 150 words is the max. And the article we submitted was more than 150 words. Now we can start and that may not be always, but sometimes they can squeeze in 150 words. We could work with that. It just, i- it feels like we're climbing a mountain, you know?
And the next one, does the Tree Board have a Facebook page that's, can be linked to from Bel Air?
We ask for something through the city. Now, we can create our own Facebook page, but we're a volunteer group of people. And it really needs to be connected to the city. It can't be ours. We wanted an address. We wanted something.
A lot of people follow the Bel Air Facebook page. So can, could she submit an article and have our people just post it, read through it, see, make sure it's okay and post it to our Facebook page?
Would you like the Tree Board to have a space on our Facebook page to post what they want? And I, I would almost, they'd almost want to have their own Facebook page and then we'd share that type of, type of stuff.
It would be nice if they did.
I'm very protective. We are, we are cognizant of growing our, our, our social media presence. Nick, it's a, it's a very strategic play to not post eight posts a day. You know, you post one a day. You, you schedule your posts. You have, you know, we're trying to professionalize a little bit of our social media and our accounts to grow our membership. And Rebecca, we're going to do our best to literally promote everything you can within, within our strategy to grow our viewership. And that, and hence will create more community engagement instead of, you'll, you'll see, there's a whole studies behind it. And Nick's a very good and capable communications and marketing guy. And that's the, the position we're trying to go forward with is grow our, grow some of our platforms to contact more people. But you have to have some sort of strategy and plan in doing that. And we're more than welcome to, like I said, we're going to post about your event at the end of the month. We have it in the April utility insert. We have it on our website. And yeah, those, those three things. And I think the Bel Air Breeze has it too. We'll have a little burb. It's just, there's so much information to get out on a little page. We have to manage our space wisely and, and we'll work with you, I promise. It's just, it, it gets, it gets to be a lot all at once and, and do it in that, that, it's hard to manage that type of situation.
Does it, does it cost to have a Facebook group like the Tree Board?
It's free.
Okay. So they could start that up themselves anytime they want.
Okay, that, then we have to manage it. Meaning if, as we leave, that person that started that has that. If we had, so we were trying to get an email that wasn't our own, because as you leave, you know.
Yeah, I've run into.
Yeah. So we were trying to get it set up with the city, but it wasn't doable for whatever reason. So we're struggling to do this as volunteers and believe in engaging the community.
We, we can do a half F, half time, part-time person if you want to fund to help with this sort of thing. I just don't, I don't have.
I think that's overkill.
If you, but.
For a half-time person.
I, I under, I'm just trying to protect my staff a little bit and that we're going to do everything we can. It's just that there's a lot going on. There's a lot to be posted. There, there's a lot to do. And, and we're more than welcome to, we're, we're going to help. But that type of managing a whole nother page and doing that sort of thing is, is actually more, and Rebecca understands because she says, we, we're only volunteers. We don't want to do that much work. Well, you know, it's a lot more and it's a lot, more of a task than you.
Okay, I'm going to make a nasty comment here. But if you want the community involved, somebody has to do the work. And if, you can't complain if your group's not willing to do it.
Well, we, we've been willing. The thing is there's certain things like having our address, using our own emails. This is what we're doing. And that's not going forward a good idea. So figuring it out.
Get a Gmail address. So you just have to come up with something new. If the old one doesn't work anymore because the guy's moved off, just realize that that's a problem for the future and make that part of your documentation is, this is our email address. This is how we sign in.
Yeah, we can keep on going.
This is our Facebook page. This is how you sign in. And you can hand that down to the next person.
And that's, we've been doing this. And with this, we can keep on going like that. And when we, our, our Eagle Lake project last, last year, we handed the signs. I mean, we walked around and hand posted them because they didn't get out into the water bill. And we've had several times when they got to the water bill after the event, you know? So we just keep unplugging away. We keep trying, you know? And the thing is, it's, it's.
And that's the problem with the monthly publications.
Yeah. It's a mountain we're climbing. We had 33 people show up at our last educational event. We don't know how many will show up at the Eagle Lake event. We just keep plugging at it and hopefully we can keep building on it. But what you have to do, just like all those walks I did and all what Cara is doing, if you don't got people engaged, then you can't go for that $10 million grant money that's going to pay for some big projects that you have on your list. And that's why I think the police reports aren't so hot. I think people want to know. Six of the teachers at, at Northeast Magnet, who I work with that live here in Bel Air, that's, they want to know. They ask me what I'm doing. They ask me what's going on. And so people don't have time to watch this. I don't do that. I'm, this is well past my bedtime, to be honest with you. And so I'm just trying to figure it out. And you guys are doing really hard work. It's hard to listen to this time after time and try to make these decisions. And people want to be engaged. I don't know how to get there, but I'm going to keep trying.
Well, I appreciate you trying. And, and it is a huge problem in today's world. I've often said, and, and I'll continue to say that you kind of have to use multiple media to communicate because people have different ways they get their information. Some people watch TV and get information that way. I never turned TV on to get information. Some people read papers, some people do social media. People do all kinds of things to get their information. And each one's different. I mean, some, some of us use more than one source, but.
With the Breeze, comes to everybody's house.
You can't rely on just one. You can't rely on the Breeze. You can't rely on the social media. You got to do them all.
But I, I get that. But the Breeze comes to everyone's house. And if you talk to your neighbors, every one of my neighbors, they read the Breeze. I mean, it's just because it comes to everyone's house and this is about their neighborhood. This is about where they live. So I, I haven't figured it out. I just keep working at it. I just keep trying to connect with my neighbors. I, I, I talk to people everywhere I walk. I, I, I think the City Hall has a beautiful opportunity right out here. That's a beautiful place. I wanted to start to do a walk on Saturday mornings because you can, if they can come in and use the bathroom, that's something that, and get a drink of water, there's also a kitchen. And people, every one of our events, people stand around and chit chat, you know? They like it. They like being together. So I think we can get there. I just, I don't know how.
One other thing I'll add on the social media part is I know the Rec Center has frequently shared, I know Cara, some of Cara's events, and I know probably some of the Tree Board events. I feel like instead of reinventing the wheel with the social media page, I think the Rec Center is a, a pretty decent audience. Now, I know that takes a step of involving staff, but it feels like the natural place where you might share, kind of like that kind of citizen type activity, not necessarily the city page, but the rec page. Cause you might be targeting the right audience with that page. So I'll just throw that out there as maybe a happy compromise of how do you get more citizen type groups in front of the Rec Center? I think that might be a potential option. Still takes time, still has to be vetted. Obviously you're not going to post something unless you review it and make sure that it's acceptable to the city. But doesn't necessarily need to derail the city's page and this, its strategy. And I've seen that used from time to time.
I'm more than willing to help and, and we work well together. Rebecca, we talked about Saturday morning, I use the facilities, that sort of thing. And I didn't mean to, it just gets, there's a lot of information that needs to get out and, and there has to be some sort of order and structure to it.
It takes time to figure it out.
Part of my job is to make sure there's order and structure to what we do.
Where does the UAC's box fit? Is it on the same page with all the rec information? I can't remember where it shows up in the Breeze.
Yeah, did you know?
Page. It's the digital.
It's on the same page. Yeah. I honestly, I like reading the police reports. I'd like to see the Rec Center stuff condensed a little bit so we could get more on that page if that's the only page we have. They, they take a lot of space. I know they have a lot of activities, but they take an awful lot of space.
And, and that's kind of what we run into. Do you want everything to be 10-point, you know? It's, and that's what's difficult. And, and maybe we, maybe we set a schedule.
Maybe they don't need all the details on there. Maybe they just need, we're going to have tippy toes dance class for more information, go here, instead of it's at five o'clock on Saturdays and it's going to cost 30 bucks and everything else that they say about it. Maybe we could cut down some of their detail and sell people off to the Rec Center website or something for more information.
And, and then Rebecca, Rebecca, I want to thank you for coming and expressing what's going on with the Tree Board and some of the challenges. And I also want to honor your idea of, I do think that there's a better way to involve Tree Board and potentially an active transportation committee and other boards in the planning process. I just don't know what that answer is. But I do believe there is a better way of potentially involving them from an advisory standpoint in our planning process. And I think it would be healthy for Paula and our planning staff to consider how other local communities are, are engaging the citizens in the planning process. Again, they don't have a vote, they're advisory only, but they can be used as a support to the planning commission and helping make recommendations on new policies to enact, whether that be a sidewalk policy, whether that be a tree policy. That can be legwork that's being done by the citizens that care deeply about those issues. And then that can come before planning commission and city council to make final decision. But I do think we can do better. And I really appreciate you coming and bringing that to our attention.
And that's where the money, that's those communities that did that. If you go to Baldwin City, you go to all these communities that got money, they got it from Sunflowers Foundation. Those foundations in Kansas are very, very wealthy. And they're giving out this money. But where it comes from is there was a group of citizens. But where it comes from is there was a group of citizens that came together. They worked with the city, created a plan. People like to plan. So it's figuring it out. I have not figured it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
All right. Thank you. Anything else on the agenda tonight?
I received an email from city of Wichita and they're looking pretty hard at water reuse for their system. And we are also looking at water reuse on our system and it's going to talk a little bit about it. Ours is a little different, but Gary asked if anybody wanted to hear and join kind of a, an advisory group of that. And I, you know, I, I'll probably be there just to hear what the ideas are, but I wanted to open it up. I know a few, few members are passionate about this. So contact me if you, if you want to be part of those meetings as a city council member and I'll get you the information.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I was attended the Wampa meeting today and they did a brief presentation of the K two fifty four plan. Just to remind everybody that the K two fifty four Development Association or can't remember the exact name of Economic Development Association is meeting this Friday at, in the community room here in Bel Air at eleven thirty. We may have a pretty well attended meeting because that was announced in Wampa today that we were having that meeting. And it's also, I think REAP has been inviting, we've invited some people from REAP as well to come to that. So if, if city council members are able and want to be part of that, it would be good to represent the city there if you can. So and I understand people have jobs. They have things you have to do. So I'm not saying this is a must, but just, just everything you do is support. That's all. Okay? And so thank you. And is there anything else we need to talk about tonight? If not, we'll call it an evening. I'll see everybody next Tuesday. Unless you're coming to the K two fifty four meeting. Yes.